Good evening all. I'm going to open the City Council's special meeting of Thursday, December 5. There is only one agenda item this evening. It is A B 7877, the State Environmental Policy Act Appeal of Comprehensive Plan and Zoning Map Amendments. It is a quasi-judicial proceeding. The Council asked this evening is to make a decision on the appeal. So as we open the CEPA appeal this evening, this quasi-judicial hearing, this is an appeal by Providence Point Umbrella Association of the Final Determination of Nonsignificance for the 2019 Comprehensive Planning and Zoning Amendments, File No. SEP 19-0009. In Monday's meeting, the first portion of this hearing, there was a general overview of proceedings and many of the items, all the way through closing arguments, were completed. The task this evening for Council is the deliberation and decision. So this is a continuation from our Monday evening meeting. And I'm going to hand over the chair for this to the Council, for our City Council this evening, Ray Liao.
Thank you, Mayor. If you want to go ahead and put on the next slide, that would be helpful. So at this point, the Council needs to make their deliberations with regards to this appeal. As we stated on Monday night, the record has been closed. And so at this point in time, the Council will be going through the process of deliberations and doing each of really these four things listed in these, on this slide. So what I recommend that before you start diving into the details of the appeal proceeding itself is to actually just confirm the record, to make sure that we understand all of the materials and everyone's on the same page with respect to what that consists of. And then, as required by code and by law, at some point throughout this process, the Council needs to reach findings of fact as well as conclusions of law with respect to the issues that have been presented by the appellant in this appeal. In conjunction with those conclusions of law as a recommendation, putting a few bullet points up here, that it'd probably be helpful to discuss the standard of review through the outset of discussion of what those conclusions of law you might get to, as well as the appeal issues themselves, because that essentially focuses the scope of what you should be deliberating. And there's actually another slide that highlights those, that'll help keep you all on track. And then, at the point at which you are ready to reach your ultimate decision, there's a final slide that gives you those options of what you have to do. So with that, maybe start with just confirming everyone's understanding of the record. And if it's helpful, I'll just reference the materials that the city clerk has made available in the agenda. Fortunately for all of you, all of the exhibits that were prefiled by the parties had been stipulated to admission. And so all of those exhibits, I just realized I don't have them in front of me, but they're all numbered by C for the city, P for Providence Point, and then S for the school district. There was one addition, S7, which is, did that make it online as well now? Yeah. So all of those exhibits are part of your record. In addition, the testimony of the parties that we heard on Monday night, those are all as well, evidence in the record. And then, of course, the briefing by the parties, which is also available via the clerk's posting, as well as the appeal statement itself. Maybe I can just ask, is there anything that, Council, you believe I missed in just helping recite what the record consists of? Yeah.
So the pre-hearing briefs from each of the parties is included in that, as well as their, what was it, when they responded that morning?
Correct, their replies, yeah.
And are those in the record, Tina? I don't remember. I don't see them linked off of there, but...
They are not part of, they are part of the record, but you do not have a direct link to that.
Okay, thank you.
Actually, no, there is not.
Okay. And if anyone needs to reference those during your deliberations, do we still have card copies of those available?
I have it electronically for display.
Okay. Are there questions about the record itself?
Do we have to talk about any of the authority that's part of the record? Or is any of the citations to any of the...
The legal citations that the party cited in their briefing or as referenced in the exhibits are part of the record by virtue of the parties having submitted them. So those, as I let you all know, that those cases and links to the statutes, regulations, and city code have been provided to you, because I know you all don't necessarily have access to those exciting cases unless you have Westlaw accounts that I don't know about. So unless there's any further discussion on the record, I'm going to mostly turn this over to you all at this point to discuss what the Council feels to be those issues of fact that are effectively relevant to reaching your decision. I'm doing this with the assumption that most likely by the end of this evening, you will ask me to write this decision for you. So I will be doing my best to take good notes as you discuss those issues. And as you are discussing those, please feel free to ask me questions along the way. I guess I can start by saying, are there questions at this point about trying to kick off this discussion, at least from this perspective of identifying findings of fact?
Do you have suggestions about how we would go about doing?
Yeah, so generally speaking, in a decision such as this, it's not necessary to identify absolutely every fact that was presented into the record that is the record in of itself. But what was, which is typically helpful, particularly as I try to document this for you all, any of the issues that potentially were in dispute or in question by the parties, you know, might just be helpful almost to go through, in some ways, a chronology. Each of the parties in their briefs, you know, presented their own version of the facts, as I'll say it. That might be a helpful start place to start us to determine, at least in each of their respective summary of the facts, if there's anything as a Council that you think that would be worthwhile discussing with each other with respect to resolving any issues of concern or dispute, or even questions that you have of each other with respect to the evidence that you've collectively been prevented as relevant to this appeal. And you don't have to do it in this order. You can also just jump right to some of the issues, the legal issues that have been raised in this appeal. Perfect. And you can kind of go back and forth, and I can help tease those out as you guys are discussing, at least in my notes, so I can make sure to capture those effectively in your ultimate decision. You can please don't speak freely to each other now.
I don't actually have a formal role this evening. I'm just one of seven.
Fantastic, then I will talk. What I was going to say is, I wonder if there are any of those five issues that were raised by the appellant that the seven of us feel like we have an agreement on, or anything as a starting point. I don't know whether starting with some of the issues or starting with findings of fact is more useful for us.
I actually had both a question and just a comment. It sounded like there are some that are similar and related, and if we could talk about those together, I think that we maybe looked at 3.1 and 3.5, and it might, it might help with the conversation if...
I'll just, I'll jump in. So a suggestion might be that, you know, we, when we're in our role as Council members and not as effectively jurors, we start with sort of technical questions and then move to perhaps opinions. So, you know, I'll, I'll say, it seems like one of the questions that we have in front of us, and I'm not, I don't know if we have consensus on or not, is the extent to which we see sort of all of these, there's a question around phased review and whether or not phased review was applicable in this situation and whether it was accomplished correctly by the city or not. And I'll say that I have questions about, in the city's brief, their statement about the criteria under which they did phased review, I didn't completely understand what that referenced, which of those, there's two criteria in there, I didn't know which one they were using. I also wasn't sure I entirely understood the appellant's response as to the applicability of phased review. It seems like they were sort of arguing that maybe it wasn't appropriate or that it wasn't appropriately executed. So I'm curious how other people parse this issue of phased review, because it seems like it directly affects all five of these questions.
Can I pile on just a little bit? And I'm actually going to make a little left turn into law versus, and I'm going to look to Ray for some guidance here. One of the areas that I, as I read through all the briefs, of significant difference of opinion of the three participants related to whether or not it is appropriate when doing a non-project review to include information that is known about the project in the context. So I mean, it was, it was argued by one side that absolutely positively, you have to consider all the data, and the others were, it's such as, we don't have that data yet because it could change. So what, what, what standards should we be using? Because I think it will affect how we interpret the entire checklist to understand kind of what the, what the parameters that are laid out. Because I heard that was the area of most contention that I read in the briefs.
I have to tread lightly here, because I'm not taking a position either way. So let me see if I can capture some of those questions and try to address those best. So one of the issues here is that, or maybe one of the stipulations here is that this is a non-project action. So I didn't hear any dispute amongst the parties in that regard. But really, the question, perhaps in that context, is how deep does the city need to go in the context of a non-project action with respect to known or potentially known projects? Is that the question?
Yeah, that summarizes it.
Yeah. And unfortunately, I mean, that is the heart of really this appeal. And so, you know, in some regard, we really need to look at the briefing and the arguments of each respective party. I mean, I, you know, rendering a legal opinion here is a little bit tricky, because that's really what the parties have argued. But at least, maybe we can try and break this down a little bit to help the understanding. I mean, I guess, to some extent, I think the way that you captured it is that, you know, there, again, there's a, there's a recognition that there's some, some knowledge available, that there are some plans out there, that the school would, is certainly acquiring this to do more than just have a nice piece of property. But to what extent in that review did they need to consider that? Maybe, maybe to start with the facts is to talk about to what extent the city did consider that, if any. I mean, that might be a good place to start the discussion amongst the Council members, at least in terms of the evidence and the testimony that you heard with respect to what the city did consider, if they did at all.
I want to go, I have so many things up here. Go back to Tola's question about phased review. And is that, is that the same, sort of the same as one of the issues here about issue 3.3, whether city staff could rely on future mitigation during permitting? Is that sort of the same question as the phased review question?
So just in reviewing the briefs of the parties, I can try and be even-handed here. It appears that the city and the school district have offered, that is the response in large part to issue 3.3, as it was teed up by the appellant, that that's part of their defense.
Oh, that there will, so there will be phased review?
That they conducted this in the manner of phased review and that, that in the school district and the city staff's position, that that was appropriate?
And the appellant's remark about that seemed to be sort of that that was kicking the can. Okay, just making sure that we're, I'm on the same page about that. Is that better? Okay.
Okay, I'll start out rather than questions. On the first idea, I believe that it was demonstrated that phased review is appropriate. As established both in testimony and the briefs, WAC 197.11.06, so REN 5, mentions that environmental review may be phased. If used, phased review assists agencies in the public to focus on issues that are ready for decision and exclude from consideration issues already decided or not yet ready. And from my understanding of the case that we have heard, was that the project ideas that had been posted on the website were not yet ready for review, and that thus, a phased review approach in this case was appropriate based on the state law.
I guess we, oh, sorry.
Go ahead, Maria.
We, I think I still had a question in my mind. And the question in my mind is really about the phased review and the non-project. And there's a lot of, there's a lot of areas that sort of overlap there. And I'm not exactly sure what my question, but I guess I'm wondering how everyone else is feeling about that those are in two different buckets. I see there's overlap between the two, and I wonder how we should go about talking about that. They've both been the first two issues that we've brought up. I don't know if that makes sense, but...
The phased review and what's the other one?
Non-project.
So I'm not sure the issue is whether it's a non-project. I think the issue in terms of non-project is that, I think it's, I think regardless, based on the case law, and based on the case law that was presented, what you call it isn't dispositive. I think what, the question is whether or not you've gone deep enough into the environmental review at the CEPA checkup stage.
I think I did. Yeah, and that's, that's what I, I didn't define it well, but that's what I was thinking, yeah.
And so I'm, I'm hemming and hawing about phased review, because I'm not quite sure that that's any, I think that's one of the issues that was brought up by the appellant that is kind of a secondary issue. I think the other issues that are issues 1, 2, 3, 4, and 5 that we have on the screen are the ones that we should be looking at. And I'm not sure that phased review is a specific issue that's not listed in here. We've been given this as the list of issues.
Sure, but my, my response on issue 3.1, if, if phased review was not appropriate, and this was the entirety of the CEPA, then I, clearly the answer would be no. But if there's a phased review and there's another review coming down the road, then my answer isn't an obvious no.
So I think, so the phased, so the question about whether the environmental checklist was prepared adequately and completely is an independent question, independent of the phased review, because I think it has to be, it has to be filled out completely inadequately regardless.
Or the level that you're at for the phase.
In order, yes, in...
Well, I think it's for the information that you have. And I'm sorry, Barb, you had something to say, and I'm going to shut up until you talk.
Oh, I was just, thank you. I was just, that was the heart of the question that I asked, is, is the non-project same thing as a request for a zoning change? And the answer to that was yes. And so when we're talking about a non-project, we're basically talking about a zoning change. And I'm trying to find in the paperwork that was sent to us at 5:00, there was a statement in the Washington State EIS, and I can't find it now, but I found it earlier, that said that requests for a zoning change is considered a paperwork. It is not considered significant. And therefore, the answer to number one, so then, we're not really talking about the phased review, we're talking about an application that was related to a request for a zoning change. And under Washington State regulations, that is considered a nonsignificant, it's just considered a nonsignificant action. And so, and Ray, can you help me find that?
Was it one of the...
It was on page 35 or 36.
Would have been, oh, so one of the cited, either cases or treatise materials that the parties...
Washington State Environmental Policy Act. Can I just have a few, can you go ahead and...
Yeah, let me, let me pull that up. Is it, let's see if I can find it here. So I'm guessing, was it, was it, does it, is it, say, Washington Law Review at the top? Okay. So it's a, it's a statement contained within that document. Do you have that in front of you, or do you need some, do you want to put that in front of you so you can ask the question? Again, just...
It's on page 36.
Thank you.
Okay.
I want to be able to read it exactly.
This is, this is the PDF that was entitled U-Dob Article and CEPA Book Pages, so the both were cited by the party, one of the parties at least. This is the, the two PDFs that I sent to the clerks and to the City Council at about 5:00 tonight. Yeah.
Bottom one.
The bottom one. Yeah, and it sounds like it's on page 36. Did you find it, Barb?
Can't seem to locate it.
Okay.
So it says, "By contrast, proposals or actions not..."
Where are you reading?
Oh, I'm sorry, page 36 of the document that was sent to us this afternoon.
Tina, the next one.
The Washington Environmental Policy Act.
Oh, I'm sorry, it's on page 36 of that, you're on 67.
Oh, I see, so it's maybe at the thing.
Yeah.
I see.
Numbered, yeah.
Yes, "By contrast, proposals or actions not needing EIS is take on the hue of the routine and unexceptional. An affirmance of a negative declaration is the likely outcome in cases of typical construction projects in urban areas. The same is true of a rezoning," and then they give a specific example, "but rezoning that amounts to a paper shuffle, working no practical change in usage."
Ray, it's the... Yeah, I think I've seen it now, yeah. So, so it's always like, "an affirmance of a negative." So affirmance of a, an NDS, which is what we have now, is, yeah, they're saying that it's typical for these types of projects, including a rezoning, so from single-family dwelling to planned residential of an 89-acre tract in Tacoma overlooking the Tacoma Narrows, that amounts to a paper shuffle, working no practical change in usage. That was actually one of the cases that has been cited in the briefs by at least one of the parties. So there is, at least, yes, what this article is saying is that there is some authority, at least based on this case, that a determination of nonsignificance would be appropriate in this context.
Right, when the, when the non-project is a request for a zoning change.
In this context, in this, in this particular case, yeah.
Okay.
Should we raise our hands? How should we do that? Yeah, so I read that too. Thanks for bringing that up. So the 89-acre tract in Tacoma overlooking the Tacoma Narrows refers to footnote 27, which is the Narrows View Preservation Association versus City of Tacoma case. And that's the case that the ISD, Esq. District, was relying on and talked about in their, in their closing statement. And I think it's important to note in that case, I think what this is not saying is that just because you, somebody applies for a rezon, that doesn't mean that it is necessarily a paper shuffling exercise. What the Narrows View case says is that, I have it here, there was an applicant for a rezon of acreage in Tacoma, and there, the, the plan was to rezon it, and instead of building single-family, the plan was to build a lot of multifamily. And so when the Planning Commission issued a determination of nonsignificance for its CEPA review, and the City Council affirmed that, then that was appealed by an association called the Narrows View Preservation Association. And so as it worked its way through the courts, the case ultimately was decided, and the court said that it was entirely consistent for government to determine that a determination of nonsignificance was okay, if that determination was actually supported in the record and the actual determination was made. And they said that, and in this case, that record of determination was supported by evidence, and that record was this. And the activity to make that DNS was this, that comments were solicited from and obtained by the Planning Commission personnel, in this case, it would be city staff, regarding the environmental impact of the proposed rezoning. And those comments and information was obtained from Tacoma Health Department, Metropolitan Park District, Fire Department, Public Works Department, Light Division, Water Division, Public Schools, and the Washington State Highway Commission and Department of Agriculture. In addition, reports were obtained from Geo Labs, Foundation and Soils Engineers concerning the suitability of the project in connection with the soils upon which the construction would be located. Public hearings were held for the benefit of the affected public to obtain objections to the possibility of increased traffic from construction of apartments in the area. The court specifically found that the planning, and I quote, "the planning commission," well, I quote all of it, "the planning commission investigated the environmental factors which were required to be considered under CEPA. The planning commission then concluded that development as proposed under the proposed zoning would not have a substantially greater impact on the surrounding area than development of property under its present R1, one-family classification." And again, I think it's important to note that, in my reading of this case, was not exactly as the attorney for ISD represented it, which was sort of as this says, which is just sort of a paper shuffling exercise if you have a rezon. The cases, including the King County versus Boundary Review Board case, require that you actually look, you actually investigate it, I have to look at, look at the wording, you have to actually make a determination by, by asking questions. And in the, in the, sorry. So in our, in this, in our, so similarly, we know that something's going to happen on this property. It's not, it's, it's almost a certainty. If it gets rezoned, that something's going to happen on this, on this property. So both this case and the other case, and which is Washington Law, dictates that an application for a rezon such as this does not amount to a paper shuffling exercise. There are activities that need to take place, there are questions that need to be asked, there needs to be a, a real effort and real activity to terminate, to determine whether there should be a DNS. And the record needs to show what evidence was considered for those, for the environmental And the record needs to show what evidence was considered for those, for the environmental factors that are considered, that are, that need to be considered. So, I, I read that too. And I also read, read the case. And I think what the, what the Law Review is saying is that if you just have a rezon and it doesn't come with it probable development or certain development, that's different than if you have development, you know something's going there, or you're relatively, it's probable something's going to go there. Then there is an obligation to ask all of those questions. And what I heard, what I read, and what I heard very clearly was that those, that type of investigation, that kind of examination was not done at all. It was, we are aware, of course, we're aware. We're all aware that there's, that the school district is interested in that property. We're all aware that the school district wants to put schools on that property. And in fact, we've had hundreds of people tell us, and the school district tell us, that we really, really, really need to put us, put schools on that property for all of these reasons. Still, there was zero investigation. So, I think the cases dictate exactly the opposite. And that is that the environmental checklist was not completed, it was not adequate. And the one other question that I would ask in terms of issue number 31 is, the school district is very clearly the proponent of this. The school district asked for this to be rezoned. And it's completely fine for the city to be the one that fills out that checklist. But I don't think the city's obligation is different if it fills out the checklist. Sorry. Or the school district is the application that fills out that checklist. I think the answers have to be pretty much, pretty much the same. If that's not, if that, if the, if we could get around asking, answering all of those questions simply by having somebody else be the applicant, then that's tantamount to gaming the system. And I don't think that that's how SEPA works. And I don't think that's what Washington Law is.
I'll try to moderate. Councilmember Bateese, how about that? So, I, I've actually got a question that, that is unrelated to what you were just talking about. And so, I can also hold if there are other, because I don't want to interrupt the, the flow here. Councilmember, remember Ray? Yeah.
Can I pick up on that? Was that a, a non-project determination, do you know, in that case?
In the Narrows View case?
It was a rezon.
I'm not sure. I'm going to guess yes.
Because it was a rezon?
But I think that what SEPA requires, I don't think in this type of a case, differentiates between project and non-project. Just because something is categorized or labeled as non-project does not get the applicant or the proponent out of the obligation to completely and adequately fill out the checklist.
Just don't interject real quick. There are definitions under the SEPA regulations that, for both non-project and project actions, that might be helpful for clarification, just given that, that does seem to be some of the questions. And it's hyperlinked, actually, my SEPA book over here, if you want me to read those aloud, if that would be helpful.
That would be helpful.
And then we can get to all the other hands. So. So, I'm going to first read the definition of non-project. And this was in at least one of the briefs, I believe, as well. "Non-project means actions which are different or broader than a single-site-specific project, such as plans, policies, and programs." Let me see. I believe there's a definition for project. There is not. There is just a definition for non-project.
That's good. Thank you.
Councilmember Walsh?
So, on that idea of whether or not the environmental checklist needs to be filled out to the fullest, there were at least three indications in WAC 197.11. It was 235, 3B, 315, 1E, and 960, which said that part A serves as the fact sheet, part C serves as the responsible official's signature, and part D, as the non-project checklist, was acceptable for a non-project situation. Meaning basically skipping B, which is the project-specific part, makes sense. And like I said, there are, there are three indications in there that state very clearly that part B isn't required, which we also heard in testimony as well.
Councilmember DeMichele, did you have something you want in?
I echo that comment.
Councilmember Bateese?
So, just sort of related, but, but on a different track for just a moment. I just wanted to ask about, there's an RCW quoted, RCW 4321, that talks about, under conclusions of law, that state law and the code require the city council to give a degree of deference to the decision made by Keith Niven as the city's SEPA responsible official to the issue, to issue the final DNS. And specifically, the threshold determination by the city's SEPA responsible official shall carry substantial weight in this appeal proceeding. And that is, it looks like is referring to RCW 43-21. So, I can read that. And I believe I understand it. But I was wondering, can you give it a little more depth?
Yeah. And so, this is the question being the substantial weight requirement. That's both under the SEPA statute as well as city code. So, this was briefed by the parties, believe it or not. This is really considered the standard of review. And so, I'm glad you brought it up because I did think that that was important for you all to at least briefly discuss. So, substantial weight effectively means that there's some degree of deference that you are giving to the determination that the city staff has already made that, that there is not a significant environmental impact that would result from the action as defined in the checklist. And so, there's, there's additional judicial interpretation of what that means and how that's applied. I believe both the city and the school district briefed that under what's called the clearly erroneous standard. So, it's probably helpful to reference the briefing of the parties, at least to see how, from a legal perspective, that the parties are arguing that should be applied. But at least the substantial weight in and of itself, at least I can objectively say that it means that, you know, that, that you don't come in and presume that the city was potentially wrong. You, there is some presumption there that, that, that they, they did their job correctly. But it is, it can certainly be, you know, reversed. It's not ironclad, for sure.
Right. So, to, to get back to your comment about the clearly erroneous. So, I guess if I'm kind of understanding that, there, there have been times that that has been linked. But I'm, I'm still trying to understand. I understand the substantial weight and the deference. But when we get to the clearly erroneous, is that something that we can turn to a certain law to?
Well, it's, it's really how it's, the courts have interpreted.
How the courts have interpreted it over time. So, there are probably, there are different case laws where they've talked about it would have to be clearly erroneous.
Yeah. So, I will just, I feel more comfortable citing from the parties' briefs at this point. So, at least like the, the city's opening pre-hearing brief, you know, their argument is that the substantial weight requirement directs an appellate body to review the responsible official's decision under the clearly erroneous standard, case law citation. "A decision is clearly erroneous only when, although there is evidence to support it, the reviewing body is left with the definite and confirmed conviction that a mistake has been committed." Citation to case law.
Okay.
So, that's, that's been a common judicial interpretation of what that means.
Thank you.
Good question. Councilmember Ray?
This is, this is a kind of a global question. What is the specific question we are addressing today? I know we've got the five issues that the appellant brought forward. What is the specific thing we are going to?
Ultimate conclusion? Will you advance to the last slide? What's the punchline? There. That's, that's ultimately the decision. I don't know, and maybe that's oversimplifying what you're asking here.
But the, what's, the basis of the appeal is there was a mistake made in the checklist and the determination of non-significance. Is that a fair statement?
That's a fair, yeah. Let me, let me tweak that a bit. Whether or not there was an error in the checklist, that is not necessarily determinative of whether you feel that the determination of non-significance was properly issued or not. You may reach the conclusion that the checklist was properly completed, but the determination of non-significance is still erroneous, clearly erroneous. So, they're not, they're, they're not necessarily coupled at the head. But you may also decide that the checklist was incomplete. And therefore, the determination of non-significance was, should not have been issued because that checklist wasn't complete.
Right. Thank you.
Yes. Councilmember Ray?
Let's say, go back to the previous slide.
Oh, yes. Thank you.
I will say that when, when I look at the, the different, the different issues that are broken down, for me, I'm still, and still thinking it through. But the phased review piece of this, and whether that was appropriate, really is like a thread that, that, that seems to go through a lot of these issues. And so, I, I, we, we sort of started out with that question. And that, that is definitely still on my mind because it's hard for me to go through each one of the questions, like the environmental checklist, when, when I'm looking at that question of phased review and whether the phased review was appropriate.
Councilmember Ray?
So, I, I agree. Where I'm binding up and the question I'm wrestling with, and the first one I threw on the table, was phased review or not phased review, do we have an obligation to consider all of the information that we have a reasonable likelihood of knowing? For instance, that there will be a high school on that site. And that's, you know, so I don't think that's a phased review question. I think that's a, when, what information needs to be included in the SEPA checklist and, and factored into the determination of significance or not? You know, so the argument that we heard very clearly from the city and from the school district was that because we don't have certainty about what's going to be built there, we can't factor that in because we don't know. When I read the brief from the appellant, they reference many cases that say that it is the, the, one of SEPA's purposes is to provide consideration of the environmental factors at the earliest possible time. So, if we know that it's going to be a school, we may not know 100% of what those environmental factors are, but we know something. So, my question that I'm really wrestling with is, what obligation do we have to include that information into this checklist to make this determination? I think that, quite honestly, I think that's the, the single point we, we have to determine tonight.
Councilmember Gooden?
That's exactly what I spoke to earlier. That's in the case law. The case law is clear. You have to have a record that shows that you, that has the evidence that showed that you considered the environmental factors. And the record in this case shows that we did exactly the oppo, the city did exactly the opposite.
Councilmember Winterstein, you wanted to say something?
Yeah, I did. The, I think, and thank you for the reference of the Washington Code. Staff decided to, to conduct this review as non-project. As a result, the completion of the environmental section was not required. They, they did fill it out. And, and I think, and they also said clearly that, and it was multiple times, it's in the record as well, and I think it's one of our other questions, I think it's number three, 3.3, that when a, when a, when there's a specific site plan being considered in another SEPA review, to specific, to details, that they were dependent upon that process to identify and prescribe whatever actions may or may not be required of the impacts. And, and if I think about issue number one, the way it's phrased for us, and that standard of clearly erroneous, I conclude that it's not clearly erroneous. When you make a choice, non-project, supported by Washington Code, planning, knowing that there will be a detailed SEPA done specific to the project, I cannot conclude that that was clearly erroneous.
Councilmember DeMichele, and then we'll come back.
Just to follow up on Councilmember Winterstein's comments, if we have a phased review, then the, the next phase will include a SEPA. That's my understanding, that the school district will conduct a SEPA in, as part of Phase Two. And so, what we're looking at is what they're talking about again in the Washington environmental, whatever. That this is a timed project, where we have review timed over the length of the project. And so, that's what phased review means. And so, this isn't, as though we're saying, we're not going to do a SEPA, we're not going to look at the environmental impacts. Yes, we are. But it will be at a time when the project is clearly able to, studies are clearly able to be done. And.
Councilmember Mertz?
So, there were seven potential, six, six or seven, potential rezones as part of this docket. It seems to me that it was filled out appropriately for six or seven, for those six or seven in total. The argument is that there, this smaller delta, the idea that the CFF going from the SF, SL to CFF is a small delta. So, it didn't, it didn't, when you take a look at those six or seven in total, they didn't amount to a substantial change to the city. That seems to make sense. And so, I think it would be erroneous to attempt to guess the environmental impacts of a project that we didn't have a submission for. I think it would, clearly, the example that was used was traffic, right? Without an idea of the potential catchment area, the impacts on traffic in the region couldn't possibly be estimated. And it would be just as wrong to, for the city to have guessed what the potential impacts would be for a high school. Those will all be addressed in the second round of the phased review. There'll be a thorough SEPA investigation, is my understanding.
Councilmember DeBateese? Sorry.
So, I had asked the question earlier about substantial weight and deference, and something that was clearly erroneous. And in my understanding, as I was listening to all of the information of, of everyone who testified, is that the phased review, and that's why I was bringing that up earlier, that the phased review is something that's used not only from our city, but other cities. And that, and it was also my understanding that the Section B, even though part of that was filled out, was, was not required. And so, it, it sounded like, again, from what I heard, is that a phased review meant that there would be another look at, at looking at all of those environmental impact, impacts. So, when, when I look at question one, it, 31, it would be hard for me to say that that was, that that was done in an incomplete and inadequate way because that, in a phased review, just going ahead and filling out Section B, but knowing that you're going to it in the next step. I, I, I think that that's an important piece of that. And, and I, and I, I am going back to the substantial weight, the deference, to the, the people who work in this every day. And again, we, we had testimony that we heard that was not only from our city, but other cities in similar situations. cities in similar situations where they had worked on phased reviews.
Councilmember Ray.
So I'm not sure I'm in agreement on Section B, but let me talk about Section D for a second, which is the, which is the non-project, sorry, non-project supplement. And there's, there are a number of questions here, and I don't know what the answer, I mean, I know what the answers that were provided are, and they're very vague. For instance, I'll just pick on number six. How would the proposal be likely to increase demands for transportation or other public services and utilities? And the answer was, specific project impacts would be evaluated with project applications. Well, that's fine. That's Section B, so that's irrelevant. And there are no proposed changes that would increase demand for transportation or public services. Great assertion, but there's nothing in the record that establishes that that, or makes that point. And so I guess what I'm coming back to is, okay, that's possible, but I see no work that was done to establish that that is the case. And so I can't say yes or no because I have no data to support either a yes or no decision on that particular thing. And we could go through the other non-project points, too, and they may all be absolutely correct. I just have nothing that I can point to that says this work was done and we did these things to make this assertion that this is the case. It's not in the record. So I'm not saying this is wrong. I'm just saying I have no data to support this. And I don't want to make it, don't want to make a decision about this without the data in the public record that supports the assertion that's made in the checklist.
Councilmember Walsh.
So I can agree with that concept there, that the information could have been presented in a different way. But I think what we heard from testimony from the city was that looking at the difference between single-family, small lot, and CFFF, because there was such similarities in potential uses between a middle school and a high school, or, you know, sports fields and sports stadium, when you don't know the specifics of the project of a high school versus the specifics of a project of a potential middle school, you can't look at something and say there's going to be a significant increase or change in the intensity of use. And so without a specific project plan to evaluate, I think you have to default to looking at the potential uses in those two zoning and evaluate the intensity of use to determine if there is truly an intensification that would need to be studied.
Councilmember Goodman.
So again, I'm just going to keep saying it. Case law dictates that you don't just get to turn your cheek the other way just because you don't have specific plans submitted. There is a lot of case law, two of them are here, that says that there is an obligation to fill out the checklist with the information that you have. It's not. And we heard testimony that although the city knows of these plans, and we heard testimony from the school district that it's probable, from their expert, probable, it's going to be built there, we have an obligation, this is not just a zone of some tract somewhere where somebody says, boy, it'd be nice to put some houses there one day. There is an obligation to fill out the checklist. There is an obligation to provide a basis with evidence for the determination of non-significance. That is missing. That's what Washington law says we have to have, and that's not there.
Councilmember Walsh.
So let's dig into this because I think this is an important area. So what, if we're thinking through, say, the environmental impacts that are listed in Section B or D, how do you go about filling those out for a non-project situation?
So I don't think, I'm going to answer it with a different question. I don't think it is our responsibility, our job as the decision-makers up here on this appeal, to determine what that evidence should be. It is the responsibility of the agency or the applicant, filling out the checklist, to determine, to figure out what evidence they, what evidence there is to support that basis of making a determination of non-significance. So if the decision-making body were to decide that the basis for that decision is not there, if the evidence is not there, and I read you a whole list of evidence from the Narrows View case that gave the reason for the Court of Appeals to affirm the decision by the City of Tacoma was correct, if the decision-making body, such as ourselves, decides that the basis is not there, then it would be probably remanded to the city for further work. It's not for us, in my opinion, and we can ask that, our legal counsel, not for us, in our role, to create a list of all of the things the city has to do in order to create that record that forms the basis for its decision of DNS. I don't know if that helps with answering your question.
Yeah, it's just starting a conversation there and trying to understand where that line is.
Oh.
So Councilmember Goodman brought up a really interesting point because when we go to the next slide and we talk about what our options are, you know, grant or deny, is there a remand option here? Because quite honestly, I think the problem we have isn't a grant or deny. I think the problem we have is we need more, more information and to have a complete checklist.
Yes, so actually to grant the appeal would be actually to send the DNS. Yeah, you'd be sending that back to staff. It's basically, it's almost like a, do you get to move forward? Is, do you get to say environmental review is done, which would be denying the appeal? Or are you going to say, no, environmental review is not done? And there's a series of options you can take within that decision to say, no, environmental review is not done, which can range from go back and redo the checklist and make sure if you issue another threshold determination that that information is there, all the way to the other extreme, which is, we think there's a determination, there's actually going to be significant adverse impacts that result from this action, and you should actually go do an environmental impact statement, not just more checklist, not another checklist and not another threshold determination.
Thank you. So I want to pick up a little bit on where Councilmember President Mertz was going to. There's, there are more than one parcel involved in this comprehensive plan amendment. And, I mean, I guess I'm pretty clear. I would like to see the checklist further developed and the record further established. And I believe it is more than just Providence Point. I think we have other parcels that are in this comprehensive plan that also haven't been fully vetted either. And so if we send it, and it's a big if, I think, if we send it back to staff for a further development, I would like that development to include other parcels that might have an impact on, I would like to have the record show why we don't think that there is going to be an impact on those parcels, too.
Councilmember DeMichele.
So I'm going to respectfully disagree, and I will acknowledge that you have a lot agree and I don't, but I think one of the purposes of a phased review is to help governments, whether it's the city or the county or the state, to be efficient in their use of funds to do studies. And if we are asking the city to do a deep analysis of, for example, transportation, which is a very expensive thing to do, at the very, very beginning of the project before a plan is on the table, we are asking the city to spend money that then will have to be done, we know it's going to have to be done again over when we have an exact plan. So I think if we send this back to the staff or remand this back to the staff, we have to also be talking about where are we finding the funds to do the studies that are going to be acceptable someday, because this is really just delaying this project. Where are we going to find the funds for that? And what would be the standards that the staff would use to do those studies when we've already discussed that there is no traffic? The school district has not come forward with a site plan, and so, and they don't have the boundaries for the schools determined yet. So how would, how would staff do a traffic review? So I think the purpose of a phased review is to do some of the paperwork upfront, and then we can move on to the site plan and do the deep environmental work on a plan that the school district stands behind. They obviously are not standing behind the one that's on the website right now. So I think that we would be stepping into, if we apply that standard now, we're going to have to apply that to every project that comes before us. And I think that would be a very expensive thing to do.
Apply what standard? Just curious.
Well, that we have to do a deep review for every zoning change that comes before us.
So I want to be really clear. I'm not, I'm not, when I'm talking about an inadequate record, I'm not presupposing what that record would be. There just isn't one. That's the problem. I'm not suggesting there would be traffic studies, $100,000 traffic studies. I'm not, I don't know what that is. There has to be a basis for the decision. Also doesn't presuppose what, what a new determination, if we were to, if we were to grant it and send it back, if, I'm just saying if, and send it back to create a record and make a new determination, whatever that might be. I have no idea what that'd be. I have no idea what the record would be. I have no idea what the DNS is. All I know is the law says there needs to be a record, and there isn't a record. So I'm not disagreeing with you that it may be not the appropriate time to do some huge traffic study. I'm not saying that that needs to be done. I don't know what needs to be done, but there needs to be something. And the testimony we heard was, oh, yeah, we've known for, we've known for several years. In fact, the whole, the whole city knows where there's going to be schools there. But it was, no, we didn't ask any questions because this is a non-project. That's not what the law says. So all I'm, all I'm saying is, the law says there has to be a record, and there's not a record. Actually, the record is, yeah, we didn't ask any questions, really. We, that's, so I'm just clarifying that I'm not saying the law says what specifically there has to be, that what those, what the evidence is, that there just has to be evidence. There has to be a basis for that determination.
Stacy, I'll ask you a question. That case, Tacoma, was it a non-project rezone and was it part of a comprehensive plan amendment?
The cases are consistent, whether it's an annexation case, whether it's a non-project matter, whether it's a comp plan amendment, all of the cases are the same, the obligations are the same, generally the same about the basis that you, the record, the basis that you need to have in order to make a determination. And it makes sense. How do you make a determination about something if you have, if you don't have the information, some sort of basis for that decision? I mean, it makes sense.
Sorry, did you, Councilmember DeBateese, did you want to say something?
Yeah, so the, yeah, I'm still, I'm still coming back to the, and just trying to better answer the question in my own head, back to the phased review and the fact that this is, it sounds like from the testimony that we heard, that the phased review is something that has been used in our city, is used in other cities. So it's something that's actually used. So it is, so I'm just, I guess that that's kind of my 10,000-level foot lens that I'm looking at this through, and it's, I'm just sort of hung, we're getting down into the details and I'm listening to everything, and it does, it is making sense. But I'm thinking about precedent. I'm thinking about the fact that this is a process that, that we have done in the past that is part of, it sounds like appropriate planning if we, if we are able to do a phased review. And so that's still, you know, sort of, again, a 10,000-foot level question that I'm still going over in my head.
Councilmember Ray.
So I want to, I want to kind of take phased review off the table because even if we are doing a phased review, we still need to have something in the, this is, I'm going to parrot Councilmember Goodman just a bit. We have to have something in the record that we can point to, whatever it is that establishes why we made the determination that we made. And what I find when I look at the checklist, which is all I've got in the record, is I have assertions made in there, but I don't have any, any reason or any, anything to back them up. So I don't know what the final determination is going to be, but I don't feel like I have the data to do that. And so I just want to be real clear. I don't know if this is a non-significant or is there is going to be a need for EIS because I don't have the data in the record to make that determination. And so if I, as I go down that road, I go, yeah, we have a clear error in the creation of this determination of non-significance.
Councilmember Mertz.
I'm not taking phased review off the table. I think it's essential to considering the questions that are in front of us, both as a legal matter and as a policy matter, because it points to the fact that when there is a site-specific plan, there will be a SEPA review of that plan. I think that we have heard that the law vests in Director Niven a certain authority to fill out this application. And what we have heard in testimony was that the administration viewed those rezonings as fundamentally, you know, there's a standard, right, that there needs to be, and I don't remember the exact term, more than moderate impact, I think, or words to that effect. And it was his position that going from SFSL to CFF, you know, this smaller delta criteria. And you can disagree with that assessment, but it was their assessment. And so, you know, I think that with all due respect, saying we need to take this off the table or that off the table, the seven of us will arrive at the conclusions we arrive at, and you're free to come to a different conclusion than I do.
And that was my conclusion.
Follow, oh, just a second.
Please.
So following up on that, so whether or not there will be a future SEPA, that we have a SEPA checklist now, and that same law review says, ultimately, the courts must be convinced that the judgment of no significant environmental effects, which is what we have here, was genuinely undertaken, fairly explained, and intuitively correct. The solicitation of information from other agencies and even a pro forma hearing will not suffice to sustain a negative declaration if it produces a record, quote, "filled with many assertions, numerous unanswered questions, and a paucity of information." So whether or not there will be, what did you say, EIS later? Is that what you said? Sorry.
SEPA.
SEPA. So we have a SEPA checklist now. The determination has to have been, as I said, has to have a basis, and it has to have been fairly explained, intuitively correct, and genuinely undertaken.
I'm sorry, for what document are you quoting?
It's page 42 of the Washington Environmental Policy Act. It's the law review.
Thank you.
Do you want it?
I've got it electronically. Thanks.
It was cited, sorry, it was cited in the appellant's brief.
Councilmember Walsh.
So just looking at Washington State Code, I was trying to find something that related the SEPA with the comprehensive plan. So WAC 365, 196, 620. And then let's see where I'm at. Oh, gosh, I lost it again. Okay, 3G. Find it in a second, but basically, I think the part that comes down to me is the idea of this within a comprehensive plan. idea of this within a comprehensive plan means that you have to evaluate all of the items together. And so creating a, well, I will find it.
Did you want the legal citation again? 360, oh, this is WAC 365, 196, 620.
Yeah.
It's the integration of state environmental policy act process with creation and adoption of comprehensive plans and development regulations. It's actually the GMA regulations.
Okay, so 3D says, "When evaluating comprehensive plan amendments, these amendments should generally be considered together as one action under SEPA so that the cumulative effect of various proposals can be evaluated together." And from my reading of that, it suggests that, you know, getting into details on a specific site in the non-project section of SEPA wouldn't necessarily be appropriate because you have to look at the effect on the city as a whole of a comprehensive plan amendment.
Councilmember Goodman.
So if that was, so what you're suggesting is that the, we could roll in, roll in a whole bunch of actions, a whole bunch of things into a comp plan amendment and everything just kind of disappears into one non-project. That's clearly not the law. Everything would go under the radar. There would be no review. There would be no environmental review. That's, that's not how it works. And if the school district had been the applicant, the city staff never would have accepted these answers.
So I'm wondering if we want to consider taking a once around for the seven of us on this question and move on to the next question? Because it sounds, it seems like we're winding down our questions and our comments to each other.
Which question are we?
Yeah, I was just going to ask.
Issue 3.1. And I, I think there was a suggestion that 3.5 is fundamentally similar, but I would be happy if we just, I mean, my suggestion, and again, I'm not chairing this meeting, is that maybe we just go, go around on 3.1 and then move on to 3.2. But I can do this all night.
You've got so much to do it, too.
Yeah. I'll start. I, I do believe that the checklist was complete and adequate, and I'm going to read another statement from that infamous page 36. Another group of cases, better viewed as timing cases, by no major action attending a variety of preliminary planning moves that cannot produce observable impact without later decisions that can be attended by full EIS compliance. I think what they're talking about there is, is phased review. And I think the checklist for the request for zoning change was complete and adequate.
Can I just keep, I'm sorry, just keep going down the line, maybe?
Okay. So similarly for 3.1 and 3.5, WAC 1, which one am I going to choose? WAC 197.11.960 states, "Use of checklist for non-project proposals. For non-project proposals, complete this checklist and the supplemental sheet." Oh, did I choose the wrong one? Basically, you don't need to complete Section B and so I believe that shows that it was not incomplete or inadequate.
I, I think the checklist is more than Section B. I think Section D is specific, Section D is very specific to this, this undertaking and I'm sorting, beating my hobby horse right now, but I don't have enough data in what was provided in the checklist on, in Section D, which is for non-projects, which this is, to support the assertions that are made in there. They, I mean, Councilmember Goodman did a much more eloquent job of speaking to, to the requirements and what we have here are the things that the case law said don't meet those requirements. So I, I can't say that this has been prepared completely and adequately, regardless of whether we include Section B in it or not. Section D, in my estimation, is completely unsupported.
I'm hearing two recitations, case law, Washington law, that seem like they're in conflict. It seems like if, whatever, whatever side of one you choose is your preference, you can make, as evidenced here, you can make a very strong argument for one or the other. I don't like being put in that situation because it means, you know, it's going to be more of a judgment than based on law. You can choose to choose the case law representation. I think these are also valid sites as well. And I, and I, you know, my criteria is going to be, I'm going to step back and think about, you know, the big picture and what we're trying to do here. And, and, you know, I heard a lot of people, I heard a lot of people say, boy, I'm in favor of schools. And, and on both sides of this issue. And I hear strong arguments for and against whether or not this was, there was an error, whether or not it was clearly erroneous. I've heard strong arguments for and against. And I know that there's going to be a detailed SEPA done. And so I, I stated my point earlier that I don't think there was anything clearly erroneous. In other words, I wouldn't remand it back on this issue.
Well, I think you know what I'm going to say. I think the environmental checklist was inadequate and complete. I think it, I think I've said it all before. I just, I think it's stunning. I would absolutely send it back on this issue.
So in, in regard to 3.1 and 3.5, and we can go back, excuse me, just for a second. I really do, earlier we had talked about phased review coming off the table and, and I'm not in a place where I can take phased review off the table. The, again, repeating what I said earlier, this is something that, from the testimony that I heard all across the board, this is something that is used. And looking at all of the, everything together as a group, there, there, the, the people who do this every day had come forward and come up with the determination of non-significance. And I, I also am paying attention to the issue that talks about substantial weight and deference and, and especially something being clearly erroneous. I don't think that that was the case. And so I will say that I believe that because this was a phased review and it, and from what I'm hearing, that this would be looked at later and that with the, really the, the first phase, that the checklist was prepared adequately.
So I, I will reiterate that I think that the concept of phased reviews at the heart of this, you either believe that you can talk the general and then get into the specifics or you don't. And I believe that this checklist, again, reflected six or seven, depending on how you count it, rezoning and for that, I, I think that it was filled out in the, in the spirit of the phased review. And so I, I don't, I don't find it wrong.
I make a comment since I was the one who threw phased review out there and I, I was not very articulate in how I.
Do you want to close the microphone closer?
Thank you. I was not very articulate in how I said taking phased review off the table and what I meant. So I'm really clear. I agree with phased review and I agree that we should have the ability to do a first pass and a second pass with greater levels of detail and specificity. My point about phased review was I think it failed on phase, on phased review. I, I think it fell short even on the initial phased review. So I, I'm not disagreeing with any of you that it's a good practice to do a non-project review on something like this and then come back and do the specifics. I think that's right. I think that's good. I guess my point was, where I was sitting, this failed on the first phase of the SEPA checklist. So, so I just want to be real clear on kind of where I was on that position because I, I was, I was hearing you guys exactly what you were saying and I was, I was agreeing with you on, on the principle of phased review. So when I was saying that, I was, I was going in a different direction.
Can I ask a question of my fellow councilmembers? Just to be clear, so is there anybody who is interpreting my comments as thinking that if the checklist is incomplete or we, or it gets remanded for, for their work on it, that that some, is, is anybody interpreting that as I'm somehow thinking that, that we should require an EIS, an environmental impact statement? Is that what anybody's thinking I'm saying? Okay, just making sure. And I, if there are, if, if any of us don't understand what any of those things are, I think that's the time for us to ask now. Because a SEPA checklist for this non-project action and requiring more work on it or sending, sending it back for more work on it and asking for a new determination, whatever that is, does not negate phased review, just so everyone's clear. It is just, it would, it would, my comments are strictly because this phase was not done correctly. It's not because I oppose phased review, just to be clear.
Shall we move on to issue 3.2? Don't everybody all speak at once?
Yes.
3.2?
Yes, issue 3.2.
Whether the environmental checklist and finally should have been, yes?
Sorry. I apologize, I was reading.
Just very briefly, I thought the, the city staff gave a good rationale for.
Could you pull the microphone closer?
I'm sorry. I thought the city staff gave a good rationale for why they decided to be the applicant rather than the school district. If I heard it correctly, they being the applicant opened the doorway to the next phase of the project. And so it seemed to me, or it sounded to me like bureaucratic or paperwork kind of thing that the city took on the applicant role during this phase and that later on the school district would be in that role. I maybe, maybe heard that wrong, so.
Councilmember Ray.
I think it's absolutely appropriate for the, the city to be the applicant on this. The school district has a few of the components of this comprehensive plan amendment, not all of them. And this was a checklist that was aimed at the entire comprehensive plan amendment. So it would actually have made no sense for the school district to have taken the lead on that.
Councilmember Goodman.
I think the school district should have been named on the applicant as a proponent, a proponent of one of the specific docket items, which is the Providence Heights property.
And if I, and probably Talis, too, since those are both.
Yes.
Councilmember Walsh. Sorry.
I think I could go either way on that. From my perspective, it does not change whether or not something should necessarily be remanded back, whether or not the school district should have been named as a proponent or, or not. That's not a big deal from my perspective.
Councilmember, what you're saying?
Yeah, again, I want to ask Stacy, to your point, what's, what's the material difference if they are actually named as a proponent?
There is a, the law doesn't state it in terms of material difference. The law just requires the SEPA checklist to be filled out completely inadequately and it requires identification of enough information for people to be aware of what's being proposed.
When, when I look at this, tying this back to the, the whole entire, the bigger question here, I'm, I'm struggling a little bit. But I, I believe that when we're looking at this, because there were several different elements to this, the, a different comprehensive plan pieces, that it, it seems like it would have made sense for the city to be the applicant, so.
Councilmember Marks, do you have any?
Sure. This is, again, if you believe in phased review, this, this DNS in front of us is around the entire packet of materials and that's clearly the city vis aequo. There doesn't appear to be a mechanism to have multiple proponents on this. So I don't know how, or how it would have worked to say, oh, on one of these, there's a, there's a co-proponent or something. It's, it's fine to me that the city was both the applicant and the proponent.
Councilmember Goodman.
Question. So if we've had, I don't know if this amounts to things in the record, so if something is in the record or not, but for prior comprehensive plan amendments, is it fair to discuss what we have done in the past as a council? What's have been in prior comp plan amendments?
For, maybe you could clarify a little bit back. Do you mean with respect to who has served as the applicant or project proponent in prior comprehensive?
That's been included in the, in what's.
I, I guess if, if you can speak with authority on that for the known fact, I mean, I guess if we were doing it from memory, that might be a bit concerning and it's, it is not really in the record. So I guess, I mean, are you, are you asking that from the perspective of precedent or just trying to gain greater understanding of how you define who should be the proponent or the applicant in, with this type of proposal?
Yeah. Yeah, I'm not, I, I don't want to kind of muck it up. That's okay.
Okay. And Councilmember Walsh, sorry.
So looking at the environmental checklist, in Section A, question nine, it does mention "Two properties of the S. School District are proposed for community facility redesignation or zoning are currently in the permit review process." And then two other times when it's looking at the specific parcels, it does mention schools. So I feel like it's, it's included in the environmental checklist even if not listed as the proponent.
The other discussion on this particular issue, we kind of already did the go-around. Councilmember, I understand you look like you're going to say something.
I was going to ask if we wanted to kind of just go through one more time or were you saying you think you have an accounting?
I think everyone except for arguably you has, have indicated your current thinking on that.
Okay. All right, that's, that's what I was wondering. I agree with Councilmember Walsh. It's, there was for just awareness about what's going on, what would be the purpose of this rezone, who's doing it, what might, who's asking for it or who it may benefit and for what purpose. There was no mystery about any of these. So I don't, I don't, this issue 3.2, whether they're as the applicant or the proponent or certain school district plans as proposed project and proposal, again, I think there's sufficient information communicated. Somebody doesn't agree with me.
Sufficient information? I'm sorry, could you just complete that thought for my clarification?
In the checklist, so that, that addresses that.
Okay.
Does the council want to move on to issue 3.3? Okay, let's do that. Okay, let's do that. How about I read it out loud so then I'm not distracted? Whether city staff could rely on future mitigation during permitting to address adverse impacts arising from development permitted and/or anticipated by the proposed comprehensive plan amendment or rezone. Councilmember March?
So I feel very, very strongly that the appellant's argument is basically a rejection of phased review. It says there is no evidence or reference to report studies or project analyses that indicate adverse impacts from the school's proposal can or will be mitigated, and that is just 100% counter to the concept of the phased review.
Oh, Councilmember Walsh, sorry.
So my perspective on this is if there was well and truly an application in to the city staff with a plan that was in the works, that then you would almost... You would have to start to address some of the needed mitigation. And because this was a pre-application conversation and an application had not been submitted, I feel like it's impossible to look at potential adverse impacts from just a rezone when you've determined that the intensity of use between those two zones is fairly similar, and thus the ability to mitigate between the differences of those at this stage in the process, I think, is difficult. If there was a big difference in the rezone, even if it was phased review, there might be something there to mitigate. But I don't think in this case, because of the zone differences that there is.
Councilmember Winterstein?
The phrasing of this issue is funny to me. Whether city staff could rely on... I'm just going to get rid of the word "future," just rely on mitigation. And, well, we absolutely rely upon a CEPA review, and if any items are identified, some type of EIS and mitigation potentially identified. So, yeah, we're very... We do rely upon the process to identify and identify impacts and potentially prescribe some type of mitigation. And it seems the question... Some of the question here is where in the timeline do you want to do that? And it was clear, especially during Trish Hanen's testimony early on, it's like, yeah, we know there's going to be a project one. We're absolutely... Those questions about impact are going to be assessed in detail. And I thought that was pretty powerful. And anybody who is wondering if there's going to be impacts, I would hope heard that and see what the plan is to know that that is going... Those are going to be addressed. I think it's whether you do it sooner or later, and I think later with a lot of detail and the final detail makes a lot of sense. So, yeah, absolutely could rely upon future mitigation.
Councilmember Ray?
Thank you. This really is my opportunity to come back to phased review. So, yes, we have to do this in the second phase, and that's not an option. My issue, since my kind of first words this evening, go back to the statements that there's an obligation to provide as much information as soon as possible, as early in the process as you can. And so maybe that's more of a 3.1 question, but we're going to do 3.3, I'm sure of that. I would just rather have the information sooner rather than later.
Councilmember Goodman?
So the issue, the question, whether city staff could rely on future mitigation during Future... Sorry. Whether city staff could rely on future mitigation during permitting to address adverse impacts arising from development permitted and/or anticipated by the proposed comprehensive plan amendment or rezone, and I would continue it, and therefore not comply with the law for this CEPA checklist, then my answer is no. I don't think you can rely on the future and completely ignore the environmental impacts when you're doing a CEPA checklist. I'm going to keep going back to that.
So I guess I think that part of, especially after listening to Councilmember Goodman's answer, this is worded very strangely to me. It's hanging me up in a couple of different places. So I'm going to answer based on the way that I interpreted that, which I... And I think that we all might have some different interpretations of number three. But to me, when I read this, this is really the crux of phased review, and that was my read on that, is that we would be looking at all of these issues as we looked at the next phase. And so that was my read initially, and that's how I was interpreting that 3.3.
Councilmember March, then. Ding, shal.
Yeah, I mean, I think, yes, it is interestingly worded. So this is why I go back to the appellant's brief that they initially submitted. Reliance on future mitigation is inappropriate. That is just a rejection of phased review, period.
So I'd like to focus in on the word "rely," and I want to acknowledge that the people of Providence Point have raised many, many important issues about this project or this particular piece of land. And I think that we're dealing with trust. Not only can the city staff rely on this, but can the people of Providence Point rely on future mitigation during the permitting process? And I think that we would be remiss if we don't take to heart that many important issues have been raised and that those all need very, very careful review. I do think that that review needs to take place as a phased review at an appropriate time because we, again, are the stewards of your tax dollars, and it is not, in my mind, appropriate to spend a lot of money on environmental studies when then those get changed later on when we actually have a plan in front of us. So I would affirm 3.3, but I would say that that is more than just the city staff. It's does our community, and especially do the people at Providence Point, can they rely on that phased review? It's going to depend a lot on how we communicate and how well we communicate and how well we bring everyone into the conversation.
Other additional discussion on issue 3.3? Councilmember Goodman?
And did we hear that who would be the lead agency once the project was off the ground? Is that the school district?
For CEPA, but we have the approval of the master site.
Could you speak into your microphone, sorry?
The CEPA would be done by the school district, but the city council is responsible for the master site plan for approving that. And as part of that approval, I would presume we would be able to access the tests and studies that are done for the CEPA.
Okay. I was kindly reminded at some point we should take a bio break. So before we launch into issue 3.4, I'll pause and see if the council would like one now. Okay, I'm seeing heads nodding. Why don't we take 10 minutes? Is that... Five? We'll do five. Okay, we'll take five.
We're back. Thank you. For my benefit, could we actually bring the slides back to one? So just a reminder, because we just dove right into the meat of the issues. As I'm trying to capture for myself the discussion, not only on the appeal issues, which we're nicely marching through, I actually just thought before we dove in again, with respect to the factual determinations that are leading into some of the decision-making that you all concluding, I just wanted to take this opportunity before we start in to see if there are any factual issues at this point in time that the council think are necessary to resolve or discuss. I mean, for the most part, from what, just to try and capture some of the issues that I think we've covered, I mean, don't think, you know, for example, some of the issues with respect to, you know, who should have been the applicant versus who was the applicant. I mean, those are all very straightforward. With respect to some of the other facts that we've been, you know, essentially talking about, but not necessarily directly, so with respect to the school district proposal itself, because I do think that in the briefing that was, there was some differences in how the parties characterized what, to what extent that was known or, you know, was an actual project proposal. It would be helpful for me if the council at some point in this conversation, if there's any, you know, discussion around that issue in particular from a factual basis. And I'll try and think if there were any others, but I know that was one is definitely a thread of what you all have been talking about with respect to its relevance from a legal perspective, but in terms of if there was any disputes with respect to what the, to what extent there is a proposal or not by the school district at this point in time. So, but if you want to go right back into issue 3.4 and come back to this at some point, at least it would be helpful for me in trying to capture your decision. So, but we can, why don't we flip the slides and we'll just keep powering through to 3.4? Thank you. So, issue 3.4 is whether city staff should have considered impacts of the proposed comprehensive plan amendment or rezone on the environment where plans prepared for development of the properties exist. Oh, Councilmember Ray, thank you.
Well, this is sort of my hobby horse, so I'm going to go first on this one. This is where I actually do believe that the city should have considered, based on what we've seen in terms of state law, this was known information. It should have been fact, in my opinion, should have been factored into the preparation of the checklist.
Councilmember Goodman?
I'll just follow up quickly, and I won't, I'll spare everybody everything I already said before, because you know my answer is yes.
Councilmember Marts?
I'll spare everyone for their comment of mine. I believe phased review says the answer is no.
Councilmember Walsh?
So, in the timeline that was presented in the briefs, there was a discussion of basically whether or not this was a pre-application or an actual application that would have included plans. And so, I looked up IMC 18.04.130 A, which talks about the pre-application conference. And it says, "The intent of the pre-application conference is to save the applicant time and resources in the preparation of the application." And so, presupposing that this proposal, or this image of the site came out of a pre-application meeting, I feel like it should not, based on that, be included in a SEPA review because it was not an accepted application. It was a pre-application conversation, and thus should not be used for a SEPA review that should be based on fact, not conversation.
Oh, Councilmember Damishov?
Yeah. Is it appropriate to bring personal experience to this discussion, or is it completely on the facts and the things that were presented?
Maybe.
Well, thank you for the definitive answer. I worked for 17 years at King County Department of Transportation and as a community relations person, and worked through that, worked on several projects, the Novelty Hill Road Project, the Mountside Bridge Project, other major projects. And it just is very, very common for plans to be changed. And so, the fact that the school district had not filed for, had not done filing for permits, I think that the determination was appropriate on the part of the city that plans prepared for development did not exist, right? So.
Councilmember Batiste?
So, I would, I would say that the answer would be, well, I'll just go back to phased review, and I think that in, in the spirit of phased review, that would not be something that would be looked at at that time, as there wasn't an official, there was not an application, and this was a phased review. So, no.
Interesting how, I think it was Mr. Carlson, who was a witness for the school district, tried to address this. It's like, yeah, there may be some things you can do in phase one of a phased review. You might know something about the earth, he said. And, but he didn't go any further. It was, it was like, it was just a possibility. And so, I didn't ever hear any definitive expert testimony that in this case, it should have, it should have been done. And I think it was well-established that the plans, even as we heard during the trial the other day, are still in flux. And so, I, I do feel some tension to like, well, they should have done something. I think for my colleague to the right here keeps talking about, you know, as soon as possible, you vet things as soon as possible. And I think there's judgment, there's room for judgment in this case, when the people involved know and believe that more details were coming, and a full assessment will be made, and we shall rely on that. I think that's what happened. And so, so I think the fact that there were no consideration even of the earth, as we were told about, about prepared plans or what was being, that were incomplete, the fact that those weren't considered, I don't think is reason for remanding it.
Okay. Would you like to move on to issue 3.5 then? Which is whether city staff properly completed the environmental checklist by including answers such as not applicable or none for certain questions.
I do believe this is the same as 3.1. I think we've already asked and answered, if you will.
Great. So, I guess at this point in the evening, we have covered all of the specific issues that have been raised by the appellant's. And for the most part, it seems like there is a little bit of a discrepancy, but the, there does seem to be a majority of you who are leaning one certain way, at least on all of the issues. I at least want to take this opportunity to see if there's any desire to revisit. I mean, we haven't taken a formal vote, per se, but at least I've certainly gotten some clarity on where the majority are landing on each of these issues. But would, is there any desire to return to any of these issues, given where we're at at this point in the discussion?
I would just like to ask, so procedurally, what, I have two questions. The first one is, I think I know, but I'll let you answer, what happens from here?
Well, at some point in this evening, and it could be immediately after this round of conversation, you need to make an ultimate decision as to whether to grant or deny the appeal. And I think the way I had been thinking this gets teed up is that, that's the point where you would take a formal vote, that's the motion that was put in your council bill. With respect to what happens after that, then, these issues that you've been discussing, essentially, I mean, this is a little bit unusual, because, but if you think of it, since you know so well, and like, effectively, like in a multi-judge panel situation, is that with the majority of you leaning one way on each of the issues, is that, that we would come to differently, we would come to legal conclusions on each of those issues on the basis of where the majority of you had, had essentially landed. If you prefer, though, to take a formal vote on each of those issues, I mean, that is something that we could certainly do.
I think my question was, you draft findings of fact and conclusions of law, and then, does it come back to us for approval? And is, but you can't do that until we take a vote? You can't draft?
Correct. So, so I don't, I don't draft it up, and then you decide. You, I, we would ask that you'd make your decision about whether to grant or deny the appeal, and then the decision that I write would come back to you for final, mostly corrections. You know, the, the decision as to how you land on each of the issues and ultimately denying or granting has been made, is then just a matter of form. Did I get the decision correct? You know, are there any edits that you would like to make to that? Yeah.
Councilmember Marts?
So, I'd like to suggest that we make a motion, and if the council would like to make comments about that motion before we take a vote. So, I will move that we deny the appeal and uphold the final DNS.
Second.
Second.
Discussion?
As the maker of the motion, I'll start. So, this is normally the point where we sort of talk about policy and kind of talk to the audience. And because this is a quasi-judicial proceeding, I'm going to stay away from the policy side, only to say that I look forward to talking to the community about their concerns about this very important project after this quasi-judicial proceeding is over, and I encourage them to contact all of us on those issues. As a matter of law, I understand the concerns raised by those who feel that the SEPA checklist was not done correctly, and I appreciate Councilmember Goodman's detailed legal sightings. I do think that the combination of having it be a phased review with a non-project review inside a comp plan leads me to not, to not, not accept those arguments, which is why I made that, this motion this evening. That really concludes my comments.
So, I will, so I won't support it, obviously. That's not a surprise, based on all my comments. The, I will say that even a phased review does not relieve the applicant or proponent or whoever is filling out the SEPA checklist and doing that initial environmental check-in, does not relieve that, I'll call them, agency from the obligations under SEPA. And the reason I'm voting no is because I think it should be remanded to comply with the law. It's not compliant with the law. And for the very reason I think that you mentioned, Tola, phased review of a comp plant, some, something in a comp plan, a non-project inside a comp plan is just layers upon layers of non-transparency. That's not Washington law. That's not compliant with the State Environmental Policy Act. And I would, again, not presupposing what the result would be, but my vote would be to remand it with further work, and then have another determination be made, whatever that is. And that would be up to, again, the folks in the community who felt, if they felt so, to appeal that. But I have no presupposition about what that may be. I just think that what the city has done in this case is woefully, woefully inadequate, and I will vote no.
Councilmember Ray?
There are very many assertions in the checklist that don't have any facts in the record to support them. And as we move forward with this comprehensive plan amendment, I think that the SEPA documents should be an important tool for evaluating if this is the right way for us to approach the, the comprehensive plan. I think we've missed, we, if we go forward with the current determination of non-significance, we have missed an opportunity to have better information to inform our decisions going forward. So, I think the biggest loser in not insisting on a thorough and complete checklist is us, because we won't have as good of information as we could have had to made the decisions that we need to make about the comprehensive plan amendment.
A request has been rightfully made, that the audience has requested not to make comment at this point. This is a quasi-judicial proceeding, and it's not a legislative action at this point in time.
Quote Forrest Gump, that's all I have to say about that.
Other discussion? Councilmember Walsh?
So, I support the city's determination of non-significance in this case. I think looking beyond the environmental checklist at the actual final DNS, and the, the evidence that was brought forth through testimony and the briefs suggests that the differences between the single-family small lot and CFF zoning were the considerations, and that there was not a determination of increased intensity between the differences between those two zones. And I think that's supported in the DNS.
Yeah, I also want to deny the appeal. And, and I think that the comments just made, I agree with those, and that, that the determination and the basis that was, that it was, well, what it was based upon, and the, and the for the information about the current zoning, and the proposed zoning, and the intensity of use differences, in the judgment of the SEPA official, who we shall defer to, or at least put, give a lot of weight to, I think is, is enough for me to agree with that determination. I also wanted to cite, I found it really interesting that in the, the appellant's lawyer in his closing arguments, the first comment that he made was that we were running from the fact that a school will be built. Thought that was really interesting. I felt like I was, anybody was running from anything. I heard nothing but support for schools. And it did, did make me wonder if there was, if this challenge was really about SEPA or not, because that comment seems to suggest it was really, they needed to stop a school. And I heard nothing but comments from public, the public, about how we support schools. And, and then later on, he also made the point that, that putting off review means the public isn't going to know what's going on. And I disagree with that. And I think there's processes, and there's checks and places here, when there is a project, and there will be a detailed SEPA review, and, and which way the water flows, and which way the traffic flows, and where it comes out, and where the lights are placed, and exactly what can be done to mitigate those impacts. That will be reviewed, that will be assessed, and if something needs to be mitigated, it will be required as part of the permit process. And, and I don't think that that will be hidden. And so, I, I thought that those arguments were not very convincing. In fact, I disagreed with those arguments. So, that also weighs, I just think that was very important, that was the appellant's case, that, that those were unfortunate points to make.
Councilmember Brady Batiste?
This is a difficult decision, and while thinking this through, I will be supporting the motion to deny the appeal and uphold the final DNS. We, we do have a process in the city, and, and through all the testimony that, that I heard, that we do have a process of phased review, which means that, well, as we've talked about, that there, that there are two levels, and that, that, from what I've heard, that was the intent going forward. There is also information here that says that we will give a degree of deference to the SEPA responsible official, and it shall carry substantial weight in the appeal proceedings. And also talks about a piece of something being clearly erroneous. I think that the intent to go forward with the phased review was, was the intent. And that is the reason for how I feel at this point.
Councilmember D. Michel?
Thanks. First of all, I want to thank everybody for being so polite and civil tonight and for listening so well. There were times when I forgot you all were here because you were being so quiet. So as I said earlier, I think that some really important issues have been raised. I checked this afternoon to make sure that the next phase, that both the school district will be conducting SEPA and the council will be looking at the master site plan. Coming up on December 16th, we actually have the vote on whether or not to approve the rezone. And I would encourage everybody to contact us and talk with us. I spent some time walking around Providence Point to see the layout and the land there. And I understand that there are many houses there that will be impacted by this proposed project. And so I think, to me, this is a microcosm of what's going to happen in Issaquah over and over and over again, because we are being impacted by growth. And we're going to all have to learn how to get along with each other in much closer quarters. And as we address that and how we address that will be how we come together as a community. And I want to be a part of making this a good process and something that we can all live with eventually. So I will be supporting the motion tonight, but I'm looking forward to, I mean, this is the beginning of a long process of all of us working together to see what is the best outcome we can get.
At this point, I feel that I need to hand this back over to the mayor for.
I think we actually need to take a vote on the motion.
I know that. And so that's not typically what I, I wasn't sure who was going to do that, but I'm, all right, I'm doing it. So all those in favor of the motion to deny the appeal signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Nay.
All right. The motion to deny the appeal is passes. I believe we may have one, hopefully more motion on the table potentially in terms of that next step to complete the decision. It's not necessarily automatic that I would go out and write it. I think that you need to delegate that, that request to me unless you want, unless you all want to collectively write that decision.
So moved that.
Can I help with that one? I got it.
They would be directing the city's, the city council's council to prepare a findings of fact to support the decision.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. So for clarification for council members, I will be working on that draft. I will get you a draft in advance of your next meeting so that you have the opportunity to review that. And I'm guessing maybe the best way to treat it is like your minutes, is that when you come and meet, you know, if any, any changes or corrections that be done in your next open session, unless there's any disagreement there, then that's how we proceed. So now maybe I'll hand it over back to the mayor.
Now, that's a good time. Thank you very much, council and city council, for all of your work this evening. And just for the public who is here, thank you for participating and following this through. It's been a long process. It's been a lot of time. And I agree very much with what Councilmember D. Michel said, that it's been a, it's been a good respectful process and we appreciate it because we know it's an emotional issue and we know it is a very important issue to the residents that are adjacent to these parcels. So thank you all for that. And there being no other business tonight, we are now adjourned.